Mm-hmm.
Same with, same with the, the initial campsite was pretty rough and, uh, but that just made the, the second campsite a gem, so.
Hmm. Where'd you go in?
Uh, East Bearskin, and then we just stayed on Alder, uh, and did some day trips from there, so. Not too, not too deep, but it was fun, fun to explore that area a little bit, um. It'd been a number of years, well, many, many years, fifteen years, I'd say, since I was there, so. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's good with newbies not to go too far to have to portage and carry and portage and carry and all that, so.
Yep, yep. But, uh, we did, we did our share of day tripping, so they, they still got a little, little taste of that, but not, not nearly so extreme, but, uh.
Yeah.
But it was great for my, for my, uh, you know, core family to, to see how they, they did, 'cause we didn't go last year, um, and, uh, and I had missed it, and it's something I wanted my kids to, to at least do once a year, so.
Oh, yeah, right.
We'll try to get out again.
Hey, everyone, um, just want to let you know that you're live.
Thank you.
You're also.
I'm sorry?
When Rena talks, there's an echo.
Oh, I haven't heard it.
It's because I have Bobby on his own.
Oh, now I hear it. Isn't that just how it sounds like in the future?
Let's see who we have, uh, Commissioner Starley, are you with us?
I'm on the phone, 'cause I can't get Zoom to work here, so you're just gonna have to, um, I know, I'll have to contact Kirk. It doesn't work. I'll have to use my imagination when Lisa gives the highway update with her maps and all that. It'll work.
And we've got Bobby, you're, you're on with us, right? No, not yet.
Bobby is on.
He is, okay. Should we start? Okay, I'm going to call a meeting to order for the Cook County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, August 4th, it's typically held next week. And I believe we have all the commissioners with us and everyone else we need. So I will start off with the statements regarding justification for having a Zoom meeting today. Thereby statute, and there are five statements. Number one, it has been determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the COVID-19 pandemic and their related peacetime emergency decorations made by Governor Walz in accordance with Minnesota statutes, Chapter 12. Number two, we have ensured that all members of the body participating in the meeting, wherever their physical location, can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony offered at today's meeting. Number three, we have also ensured that members of the public present at the regular meeting location of the body can hear all discussion and testimony and all votes of the members of the body. We've urged the public not to attend this meeting in person because of the COVID-19 pandemic and have ensured that members of the public can view and monitor the meeting remotely in real time, broadcasting the meeting on the Cook County website. For due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have determined that it may be unfeasible for County Auditor Brady Powers, County Attorney Molly Hickon, County Administrator Rena Rogers, and members of the Board of Commissioners to be physically present at the County Boardroom at the Cook County Courthouse. Number five, all votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue will be identified and recorded. And I should do, will clarify that Commissioner Starley is attending by telephone conference, uh, the rest of us are by Zoom. So would you please join me and, uh, for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will go to, uh, any adjustments to the agenda that someone may have at this time? I hear none or see none, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Commissioner Mills, I move to approve the agenda, over.
Okay, does someone have support? Okay, Commissioner DuKirk, we'll do a roll call vote, Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Duchesne?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bursham is aye, passes. Okay, do we have any public comments that, uh, have been received by Administrator Rogers or by, is someone there?
Um, there is no one here, um, thank you for that, uh, Mr. Chair. I do have one that was received, um, uh, since the last meeting. Actually, it was received a little before, but since the last meeting, she asked me to read it. This is from Liz Severson. She says, "Thank you, Cook County Commissioners, for writing a letter to urge Governor Walz to mandate face coverings inside all public places across Minnesota. While I do understand the Commissioners' reluctance to urge such a mandate, I'm grateful to those of you who went along with protecting and keeping our local retail employees and shoppers much more safe over the beliefs and inconveniences of a temporary loss to personal freedom that would put so many others in our community at grave risk of contacting the deadly virus. Thank you so much for your leadership, Liz Severson."
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any agenda item there under consent that they'd like to pull to discuss further?
This is Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I just haven't seen the minutes from the last meeting. I, I, they weren't included in this, um, in this packet, and so, um, I don't, I don't think we can approve those.
Okay.
For this meeting, over.
Very good, so we'll pull minutes and bring those up at the next meeting. Anything else? Commissioner DuKirk?
I'm confused, it just says minutes, but there's not actually any minutes there to approve. Usually it has a date there, so there isn't anything to approve, 'cause it's not listed, it's just a placeholder.
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner DuKirk is correct, and at this time, there aren't any minutes there to actually approve.
I, yes, okay, I, I interpreted Commissioner Mills' statement consistent with that, too, yes. So we're not approving the minutes, so we'll, we'll, uh, approve those at the next meeting? Okay? So then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as a whole?
This is Commissioner Mills, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended, over.
Okay, do we have support?
Starley, support.
Okay, do a roll call vote, Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Duchesne?
Aye.
Mr. Bursham's aye. Okay, we'll go to Emergency Operations Command Update, we'll start with Grace Knogger, Grace, are you available?
Yes, I am here, can you all hear me well?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so since I gave an update last week, the number of COVID-19 cases in Minnesota rose by four thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven. Last week, Governor Walz released a detailed planning document for schools to make plans for this upcoming year in collaboration with local public health departments. There is a range of policy options for local districts to choose from based on the fourteen-day COVID-19 case rate by county. And based on our current fourteen-day case rate in Cook County, the recommended policy option is in-person learning for all students. All districts, however, must offer distance learning options for all students regardless of which policy option they choose. All districts must also follow detailed planning guidelines from the Minnesota Departments of Health and Education to maximize health and safety for students and staff. Updates from the EOC this past week, two of our Temporary Cares Act-funded public health positions started this past Monday. Yesterday, Jody Turbo Roberts in her role as the COVID-19 Health Educator/School Liaison, and Andrea Tofti in her role as a COVID-19 Health Educator. Both will be training in on case investigation and contact tracing with Kristin DiRuta-Worten in the coming weeks. Jody will be assisting me with linking our public health efforts with all area schools' planning and preparedness efforts as they relate to public health. Andrea Tofti will be working with Andrea Orist and Kristin DiRuta-Worten to support the Business Technical Assistance Project related to the pandemic, which has been very busy since our media release went out last week, publicizing this offering throughout the county. Um, overall, the goal of our response right now, a huge priority is working with our schools. And in this process, what we're aiming to do is assist them in creating uniform health and safety considerations across area schools in areas like screening, testing, case investigation, contact tracing, direction on when to stay home and when to return to school after an illness. So those are areas of huge overlap between school planning and public health planning right now. We're also working with school partners to facilitate clear, consistent communication related to public health measures in a school setting, and that would be for everyone involved, administration, students, family, students. So that's the overarching goal of the work with the schools, which is really just getting started right now. It's really, it's getting, gaining steam, I know the schools have done work over the summer as well, but this bit where public health is pretty, pretty closely involved has really taken off this week and last week. Also, last week, we opened a grant-making program for CARES Act funds for area daycare providers and nonprofit agencies to help them meet unmet costs due to COVID-19. Mike Kieport, um, received a fifty-five gallon drum of hand sanitizer for North Shore Health. Last Friday, WTIP interviewed Jennifer Backstrom, who's the lab director at North Shore Health, and she gave an excellent report, which I linked to, on how testing works in Cook County and how testing here fits into what's happening at both the state and the national level. So I would highly recommend listening, it's very insightful, and Jennifer has really done fantastic work with testing locally, and she's, um, so she gives a good synopsis of what that's looked like. Kristin DiRuta-Worten also updated our frequently asked question document for local businesses, and it now includes updated information on the state mask mandate. So that's a resource for businesses who have questions on what that mask mandate means for them. And finally, Allison McIntyre shared, um, that within PHHS, staff are preparing for a potential influx of applications for financial assistance with the supplemental uninsured benefits ending. And those are the, the primary updates I have from the EOC this past week.
Okay, thank you so much for all your work, and did a great job, uh, in your interview on the radio yesterday, and appreciated that as well for all you're doing. Truly great leadership in very tough times. So we'll have a roll call of questions or comments from each Commissioner, Commissioner Duchesne?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner DuKirk?
No questions, thanks Grace for the verbal update and the email and the links, it's very helpful, have an awesome week.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, thank you, Grace, for the updates. I, I do have one question, and forgive me if you've answered this before. But for my benefit and just for, for the general public's benefit, I was wondering if, if there, um, when we, when we get more into the contact tracing, if there's, um, if there's going to be a system or an ability to, um, let's see, just have numbers on, um, counties visited for people who, who contract COVID-19? Um, I've, I've heard concerns just about, yes, our, our residents, we, we've only had two cases. But if, if there's been somebody who has been up visiting and, um, comes down with symptoms and gets tested at, um, the, the hospital here, and, but they're a resident of another county, that, that we currently don't know that. And, um, and I guess the concern is just that, um, it's in our community a little bit more than, than we're aware of, and, and, but, but it gives kind of a false sense of security. But, but I, but I recognize that's a very challenging thing to navigate, so I didn't know if, if we might be able to go down that route at some point or, or not.
Sure, I can, I can, um, speak to that, and I also, that was a big focus of the interview on, on Monday at WTIP, so that's another good resource to go, but it's, it, it gets, um, it gets a bit complicated. I think what you're saying, that we probably have slightly more COVID than our case count bears, is, is fair. That's a fair assessment of the situation. So if a visitor is here and becomes infectious for COVID, and they test here at our local lab, then we do know that that person had a positive test result, and we can request from the state that we take on that case for, for interview and for contact tracing. If the individual who visits then goes home and tests positive but was here while they were infectious, that's not something that we have a whole lot of control over or, or knowledge of. Because the, the way that that contact tracing works is that it originates with your, your address that you put on your, your medical records, your county of residence. So if somebody from another county comes here while they're infectious and then tests in their home community, somebody from that, their local public health department or the state health department, they're the ones who take on contact tracing, so we don't necessarily know that they were here while they were infectious. I will say that the process of contact tracing is uniform. So that person from the, another county's public health system, where the state uses the exact same workflow that we use here locally, and so if that person had a high-risk contact, which is defined as someone who's been within six feet for fifteen minutes or longer during the time that a person was infectious, that person would expect to get a call from someone doing contact tracing, it just wouldn't be us locally. It would be from the, um, the county of residence or the state where the, the visitor, they have, has an address, if that makes sense. So that's, that's kind of what the process looks like. Sometimes I do hear about those high-risk contacts, because they reach out locally for additional support, but we don't have a way of reporting out on that, like we do tests that come back positive at our local lab or people who list a Cook County address, um, and then are counted in our, our case count for Cook County, if that makes sense.
Yes, and thank you for, for clarifying that, even if they are a visitor and test at their hospital, that it would go on our, uh, in our records. Uh, I guess, I guess just to follow up, I, i- i- in the, in the con- contact tracing, is, is there a question about travel and, and area of travel and, and that sort of thing? Or just, uh, the high-risk contacts, over?
The focus is really on the high-risk contacts, so they'll reach out to people who've been high-risk contacts, regardless of where those people are.
Thank you, over.
Okay. Commissioner Starley?
Um, thank you, um, Grace, as far as the testing goes, if someone is here and tested, what I'm hearing is it takes many days to get the test results back, so how does it work here?
So, um, again, I will kind of refer back to the WTIP spot, because Jennifer Backstrom does a really excellent job of explaining why that is and why that turnaround time for testing fluctuates. And right now, um, part of why the turn, I mean, the turnaround time for testing is largely out of our control locally. It's not something that the North Shore Health Lab has, has a ton of control over, although they can look at different reference labs to contract with to send tests out to. So I know they did recently make a shift because of that leg and turnaround time. But really, um, our, the time it takes to get a test back locally is tied in with national supply chains for the different components of the test, the swab, the reagent. Those are things that, um, are, are part of the larger supply chain, and if they are in, in shortage in other places, if things are backed up in other places, then once we send it out, there's not really much we can do. Um, and because there are areas in the United States that are seeing outbreaks right now, the supply chain for testing hasn't, hasn't caught up, it doesn't match that demand. So that's why we're seeing some of those, um, legs and turnaround time up to two weeks, and that is not ideal. I mean, what we're hoping for is that we can, we can get results back in two to three days. So I know that the local lab did make a change in their reference lab, but aside from being able to do that, I mean, it's, it's really a systems issue that goes beyond Cook County in terms of how long it takes for us to get back.
Mm-hmm, right, right, well, thank you, I will listen to the, um, radio interview also, thanks for all you do, over.
Okay, um, thanks again, Grace, uh, I'll turn it over now to Mike Kieport, and Mike, thank you for all you're doing. I think you're with us, I saw you earlier.
I'm in Rena's chair.
Oh, okay. Got, uh.
Good morning, uh, not a whole bunch, uh. Of, of course, our Emergency Operations Center remains, remains open. We did, we did make a decision last week, uh, starting in August now, to do our, as you remember, we did have daily briefings, and we went down to three days a week to two days a week, and now we decided that I think we can efficiently just meet one day a week as I meet with the state bi-weekly and the region weekly. Uh, just a reminder that all these meetings are very scalable. If something happens where we need to increase these meetings, that can be done on a moment's notice, so. Uh, the hand san- sanitizer distribution last Tuesday went very well with the businesses. Uh, we started out with a hundred and ten gallons of hand sanitizer we give each business that, that came as a EOC, three gallons apiece, some, some didn't want all three gallons. And Jim reported to me yesterday that we have one gallon left, so that was a very successful, uh, distribution. I hope it does well for the businesses. FEMA sent out a report yesterday about the nationwide national supply chain for PPE and other supplies. Overall, it's, uh, it's a pretty good report, where, you know, there, there's still stuff out there. However, the, the gloves are becoming a little bit of a, a problem. They, they reported in the report that the average glove use in one month can be up to four billion gloves in a, in a month's time. So the, their message is that if you have PPE, to be wise with it, and, uh, and, and segueing into that, I do have, uh, a fairly good supply for county employees. At our MAP team meeting yesterday, I reported out that, you know, that this is stuff that can be used by county employees, because we did purchase it with county funds, even though it will be reimbursed by FEMA and/or CARES Act, whichever is appropriate. Uh, at the MAP team meeting also yesterday, I did voice some concerns about election security. You know, it's tough enough to identify people when you're, when you're wearing a face mask, of course, need to. And, and we all agreed that, that we should do a, a little better, so, um. Administrator Rogers did put out an email yesterday, uh, asking that, uh, county employees wear their, their badges and election officials will have some type of identification, too, and I, I really feel that'll help us in the, in the long run here in the courthouse with people coming and going. That's what I have for you this morning.
Okay, thank you, Mike, uh, do a roll call for questions or comments, Commissioner DuKirk?
None, thank you for your work, and it's, uh, good to hear that you, uh, get a little bit of a reduction in meetings, so you can have a breather, you deserve it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you, Mike, for the update, and, yeah, I'm, I'm very grateful that, uh, you're able to efficiently go down to, to the one meeting a week, and, and I, uh, I appreciate, uh, you recognizing the scalability and, and expressing that with us, too. So any concerned public knows that you're there and, and we're there, that, uh, we, we will, will respond when necessary. And, um, yeah, I just appreciate all the updates in, in general there, thank you, over.
Commissioner Starley?
Yes, Mike, um, thank you again for what you're doing and keeping us all informed and, um, able to turn on a dime if you need to, so appreciate it all, over.
Commissioner Duchesne?
I'm good.
Okay, well, thank you, Mike, and, uh, that's especially good news on, uh, hand sanitizer, it's going to work, it's, it's being used. That's quite remarkable, um, uh, thanks for all your work. Okay, we'll go to the highway item on, uh, two thousand nineteen Cook County Highway Department Annual Report. And I know that Lisa is with us.
Good morning.
Good morning, and wow, look at that winter. Yeah, Lisa, I just want to really commend you and thank you for your role, and not only in doing this in the Highway Department, but as our Information Officer. You've done just an outstanding job, and what a, what a contribution you're making to us in the, in the county and community.
Thank you, Commissioner Bursham, or Chairman Bursham, I'm sorry, I really appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with the PowerPoint on it, so you won't see me, but now, do you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I can't see that you're seeing it, so I just, I had to double-check on that, and then I'm gonna get my notes up, and we'll go ahead and we'll start. Good morning, everyone, our two thousand nineteen report has actually been complete for a few months. We've held off on our presentation in the hopes that we might be able to do this in person, but COVID-19 obviously has other plans, so thank you for joining us via Zoom. I'm gonna just run through the highlights of the annual report for everyone. You can see on your screen that two thousand nineteen saw several staffing changes for the Highway Department. Overall, we had two hires, two internal promotions, and two resignations. and two resignations, along with the renewal of the shared services agreement with Lake County. At year end, we had one position vacant, and that is an engineering technician position. Twenty nineteen kept our staff busy with three projects. And that is just a photo from when they were working on one of them. And we're going to go through those projects next. And is everyone still seeing the screen, the PowerPoint? All right?
Yes, excellent.
All right. The first was the long range transportation project. This undertaking began in two thousand eighteen with Arrowhead Regional Development Commission, or the ARDC spearheading the effort. As you're all familiar, there was a public survey that ran for over five weeks, uh, in June and July. There were over two hundred plus responses, and they provided two main takeaways that are shown on the screen. Of course, preserving, maintaining, fixing and improving existing roads is a higher priority than replacing bridges, adding system mileage or investing in sidewalks and trails. And even more telling is that seventy-five percent stated that they are not willing to pay higher property taxes for better roads. At year end, we were awaiting a draft plan, and that was in its final stages. Since then, just for everyone's information, that plan has been put together. Uh, we were supposed to have a public, uh, meeting, a hearing type thing in early March, and that had to be canceled due to a severe, uh, storm. And, uh, uh, former engineer Foster made the decision to hold off on presenting that until there could be a little bit more public information garnered in light of, uh, COVID nineteen. We're not sure when that may happen. So that is on hold at the moment. Uh, one of our major construction projects, of course, was Cassa eighteen or South Shore Drive. Culvert replacement and preparatory work, uh, was completed as expected. However, paving was delayed until this year due to unseasonably rainy conditions in August and September. So you can see some of the work there being done last summer. And then, of course, we have the Cassa seventeen projects. Uh, we had broken that out into two projects. Uh, seventeen oh one was all of the preparatory work, uh, and, uh, hollow rock bridge replacement as well as the graveling and then pavement preparation for the three point one or so, I, I'm sorry, three point nine miles or so that were paved in, uh, twenty nineteen. Work on both projects was substantially complete at the end of twenty nineteen. And the total estimated cost is five point six million dollars. And then, of course, we have the maintenance program. That's where that picture that you all saw came from. So I thought it would just remind us of what's coming shortly. And we have a few things that we highlight every year. You can see when road restrictions began and were lifted. In two thousand eighteen, there were just a few days difference. They were, they began on March twenty second. The first bands in two thousand eighteen were lifted on May seventeenth and the last on June twenty. So they extended about a week longer in two thousand eighteen than they did in two thousand nineteen. The highway department crushed less gravel in two thousand eighteen than we did in two thousand nineteen. Uh, eighteen thousand three hundred and sixty-two cubic yards of class one and one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine cubic yards of class five were crushed a year ago. In two thousand nineteen, we did just over twenty-five thousand cubic yards. The cost actually went down a little bit in two thousand nineteen. Uh, we paid seven fifty to eight fifty per cubic yard in two thousand eighteen and a flat rate of seven seventy-five per cubic yard in all our pits in two thousand nineteen. The only notable difference in salt sand was that the price of salt was significantly lower in two thousand eighteen. And this had been projected. The price in two thousand eighteen was sixty-five dollars and eleven cents per cubic yard as compared to eighty-nine dollars and forty-five cents per cubic yard in two thousand nineteen. Sand prices thankfully remained the same. And then you'll see, of course, that we made the fourth of five lease payments on that two thousand fifteen cat. And then we purchased a, uh, mini excavator that we had previously rented. And we'll detail, uh, some of our equipment reserves and things as we get to the next area, which is our financial statement. What I've done is I've taken snapshots of the financial statements from the annual port. So our year-end cash balance increased from two million sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents in twenty eighteen to the just over three point three million in two thousand nineteen. Our accounts receivable increased by just over nine thousand dollars from the year prior. Due from state aid went from forty-four thousand and one hundred and thirty-seven dollars in two thousand eighteen to, uh, a hundred and ninety-three thousand and almost four hundred and seventeen dollars in two thousand nineteen. And the reason that changes from year to year is because we are, um, yeah, having funds encumbered on construction projects in two thousand nineteen. That was Cassa eighteen. The year prior, all of our construction projects were transportation sales tax or TST projects. The department's allotment balance is down significantly from two thousand eighteen due to the Cassa eighteen project. Again, we've had to pull those funds. And our inventory value is up by a hundred thousand dollars over two thousand eighteen. That varies because of things like gravel, cutting edges, tires, and of course, the year-end diesel and, and unleaded on hand. And so we do see that fluctuate by about that much in a, in a span of five to ten years. Overall, our department assets increased eight hundred and seven thousand dollars over two thousand eighteen. We're going to hit the liabilities page next. Again, our liabilities category fluctuates from year to year depending on what bills and payroll are pending at year end. Our deferred revenue was down a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from two thousand eighteen, which is not unusual. And then our fund balance section is quite detailed for two thousand nineteen. You're going to see that we have our reserve for inventory, which we are statu- statutorily obligated to hold. We have the reserve for equipment replacement at two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. As you may remember, former engineer Foster had had quite a discussion with the board about scaling back on that aggressive equipment replacement schedule out of deference to concerns for the levy. And so rather than maintain that schedule, we've put, uh, money into equipment reserves for the last few years and just maintain some of the scheduled payments that were already in place. And so those funds will be needed probably in two thousand twenty-one as we are working on that budget. Another area that engineer Foster was very concerned about was our local bridges. And so you can see, uh, that we do have a little bit of money allocated for that. In two thousand twenty, we allocated about two hundred and four thousand. And so we are working to save up so that we can replace some of those bridges on county roads that there aren't other funds available for. You'll see we have a tw- couple of carryovers that we, uh, need to have reserved for expansion expenditure in two thousand twenty. And those are crack sealing and striping. So overall, our undesignated fund balance is one million seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and change. And that is an increase of four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from two thousand eighteen. So that's good news. Every year, we are scheduled to do town road distributions. This is basically a pass through from MinDOT state aid. And then they are, these funds are distributed to the townships that have certified town roads. This is down twenty-nine dollars from two thousand eighteen. And so in two thousand eighteen, Schroder received two thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars and two cents. And Tofti received one thousand thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. You can see that Lucen does not have any uh, certified miles so that they are not eligible for this town road distribution. As an aside, due to the, uh, pandemic, MinDOT is predicting a fifteen percent reduction in all of our state aid allotments for two thousand twenty-one. And we are checking on that regularly. Our two thousand twenty-one draft budget does reflect that. Here's a snapshot of our accounts payable at year end. They are very similar to what they were the year prior in two thousand eighteen. Salaries and wages payable were a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars versus a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Our contracts payable are almost the same as well. There's about a five thousand dollar difference, three hundred and eighty-two thousand and three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Actually, less than five thousand. And long-term lease payables were cut in half because we made one of the two payments in two thousand nineteen and the last one scheduled for two thousand twenty. The next, uh, slide is just a summary of everything we've been talking about. You can see the beginning cash balance for two thousand nineteen versus the ending. And then our beginning fund balance and our ending fund balance. And again, that fund balance of two point two million has that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in equipment reserves. I mean, uh, in inventory reserves, the two hundred and eighty-three thousand and change in equipment reserves, a hundred and eighteen, five in local bridge reserves, and then those budget carryovers. So that our undesignated fund balance is actually one point seven million. We always show some information about the road program maintenance costs. And so we have this broken down from our cost accounting program from MinDOT by the Cassa, which is county roads one through twenty-three. The Cassa Muni, which are the handful of roads in one through twenty-three that are actually within city limits. So you've got seven Wisconsin Broadway, Fifth Avenue West and Eighth Avenue West. And then county roads, which are roads twenty-four through one oh three. And what's most interesting on this slide, of course, is just to look at the total expense and the cost per mile expended in each of those categories. And I'm just going to let you know that they do vary a little bit from year to year depending on what projects we need to tackle in some of those areas. So in Cassa, for example, in two thousand eighteen, we spent nine thousand twenty-two dollars and twenty cents per mile as compared to ten thousand five hundred and eighteen and eighty-one dollars in two thousand nineteen. In town, uh, we spent more in two thousand nineteen per mile, nine thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents as compared to seven thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-four cents per mile in two thousand eighteen. And in, uh, county roads, we spent more in two thousand eighteen, thirteen thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cents per mile compared to the ten thousand two hundred and change in two thousand nineteen. This is just, uh, a snapshot of the overarching categories of routine maintenance, repairs and replacements, and betterments, which are basically uh, significant improvements that extend the length of the program, of the road's life. The next, uh, slide shows a little bit more of a breakdown. So you can see in the routine maintenance, we've got things like brush and weed control, cleaning culverts, snow and ice removal traffic services. The next, uh, section has the reshaping and resurfacing and subgrade repair. And then, of course, the betterments, which are the new culverts, rails, bridges, dust treatments and so forth. Not surprisingly, the snow removal category comprises the major cost across all of our road categories. Just a few more slides. Thank you for bearing with me. Two thousand nineteen design work saw staff and consultants working on four state aid projects, two municipal state aid projects, which are again within city limits, four county road projects, and then six bridge projects. All of the bridge, bridge projects are being done via consultants because we don't have a, uh, bridge designer in-house. A small, uh, county such as Cook typically wouldn't have anyone on, on staff who has that kind of technical knowledge. Our two thousand twenty budget is a nine point one million dollar budget. And you can see the highlights for projects, gravel crushing, calcium chloride and so forth. Uh, the big news is that we are making that final greater lease payment in two thousand twenty. And that we were able to allocate some funds to equipment reserves and to bridge program reserves. Then, just a touch of humor, this is from our friends in Wisconsin. And I, I see Myron laughing. And what I want to say is, this may come from Wisconsin, but I think most of us can relate to this, especially when it comes to the passing lanes between Beaver Bay and Two Harbors. So I would, uh, be glad to entertain any questions the commissioners may have.
Well, excellent job. Uh, very, uh, very, uh, exhaustive information that you've, uh, put together in a good presentation. So we'll go with, uh, questions or comments from each commissioner. And I'll start with Com- Commissioner Duchesne.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, did, I think you got a mute yard. Um, did Kristen, when she left or before she left, did we get the equipment replacement policy done? You know, get the schedule stretched out a little bit so it isn't such a hard hit on the taxpayers?
That schedule, we have a draft that's been in place. Unfortunately, engineer Foster did not have the time to bring it formally to the board. What we did was, uh, about a year and a half ago, Kristen met with maintenance foreman Sawyer, uh, shop foreman, Steve Boots, mechanic Wes Higgins and myself. And we have a draft plan that and, uh, interim department head Mike Tardy and the staff has reviewed. And we will go over that with engineer Haas when he arrives. And then I'm guessing we'll bring it forward to the board. We are aware that we have to be very careful in terms of any impact to the levy. And so we are aggressively reviewing that schedule every year.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Dukeirk.
Hi Lisa, you know I love your reporting. And I'm going to, um, give you a new title for your job. You're the accounting engineer because it takes some serious engineering to get all of that together in a format that the common person can understand. And I, for, for once, have a department person coming before us with a report that makes me happy and not so worried about leaving as a commissioner. We can all say hooray to finally put eighteen behind us. For those that haven't been here for eight years, there are five-year plans that we do for our road projects. So in two thousand eleven and twelve was the planning phase for the five-year plan in which eighteen was put on the books for eighteen, delayed till nineteen and delayed till twenty. And so, um, for those on South Shore Drive, this process started in two thousand eleven. And obviously, the road was in a deteriorated shape back then. And they've been waiting very patiently for that to get done. So I know, uh, Lisa, I can't see you at the moment, but I'm sure you have a big smile on your face knowing that we finally can put that one to rest, I hope, this year and move on. And as always, thank you. And when I'm not a commissioner, you know that I will tune in to see your reports because they're just so incredibly wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dukeirk.
Thank you, Commissioner Dukeirk. Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Lisa. Um, I don't have any questions right now. Over.
Commissioner Starly.
Thank you. Um, yes, as always, Lisa can do a marvelous, um, report and always ends with a, a good humor. Um, I would like to understand if I heard this right. In the ARDC survey, did the survey indicate that people are not willing to pay for better roads?
No, they're not willing to see a levy increase for better roads.
Okay.
So and that is.
Okay.
Because that was one of the questions, Commissioner Starly, in the survey was whether people were willing to pay to see a levy increase strictly allocated to improving the roads. Does that make sense?
Okay.
And their response.
It makes sense, yeah.
So, so I can go back to those. I just got to get to my notes here. So they, the majority said that preserving, maintaining, fixing and improving existing roads is a higher priority than adding mileage or investing in sidewalks or trails. And then seventy-five percent stated that they are not willing to pay higher property taxes or see a levy increase for road improvement. So in other words, we should be using our state aid monies, our TST monies, be looking for additional funding, be bonding for the TST funds as we can. Uh, and then in utilizing things like the bridge money that engineer Foster started setting aside for bridge replacements on county roads. They're wanting us to do that without coming back to the board and asking for, say, a three or five percent levy increase just for road improvements.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And that, um, survey was done all across Cook County with several other questions?
Yes. Uh, we have a draft report and actually a Survey Monkey compilation of all the resort, uh, resorts. and actually a Survey Monkey compilation of all the results of those 200-plus responses. Multiple questions in depth. It was online for over five weeks in 2019, highly publicized, you know, on social media. And we, you know, did media releases. We had flyers that we handed out. And people could also come in and ask for a paper survey if they did not have internet access. And we had a handful of those requests as well. And we had given paper copies to all of the committee members, the steering committee, and they were able to hand them out too. So people had multiple means by which they could respond or contact people for information.
Great. Well, that's, that's a wonderful use of how we support ARDC too, you know, as a county. We support them. And I guess my final comment would be how much we appreciated Mike Tardy to be here and did he get a thank you note? Small detail.
He is still here, of course. Engineer Haas is starting on Monday, the 10th. And I believe interim administrator Rogers has asked interim department head Mike Tardy to stay on as needed on a part-time basis to help Engineer Haas get settled. Is that correct?
Um, yes, Lisa, that's correct. Just in the same way that we had some overlap with with Kristen Foster and interim Mike Tardy, we'll have some overlap there as well. There's certainly a number of projects in place that we need to make sure that from an engineer to engineer, it's handed off to him so he can understand the environment.
That's great to hear then. Appreciate that Mike will do that and and work with the new engineer. So way to go.
We were fortunate to have him this summer. Extremely knowledgeable.
Right. I would just like to add that, yeah, that was a total gift and I appreciate that that Kristen made, helped us figure that. But Mike, Mike was, he was just so easy to work with and I think instantly walked in and gained trust from the staff. So we really have appreciated it very much. That's just one place that I never stayed up at night worrying about it because I knew Mike was in charge.
That's what I'm hearing. So I appreciate it too. Thanks a lot, Lisa. Over.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley.
Okay, well, thank you, Lisa, for all you do and and excellent report and great information and great planning.
And thank you for being willing to do the Zoom meeting. Like I said, we'd held off for a few months, hoping we might be able to do this in person, but that's not going to happen. If you want to see the full report, it is posted under Highway Documents on the Highway Department page for the county. So you can always pull up the whole report.
Excellent. I'm looking forward to winter, looking at you right now.
Thank you. Have a good week, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to our assessor. And we'll start with the tax abatement policy update. And I just have one question. Are we going to adopt this or is it just an information only?
Bob, you're on mute.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I would like to remove this from the agenda and just take this up at the next meeting. I'm at a meeting right now and the Department of Revenue is just starting his part of this meeting. So that's kind of the whole purpose of being here. So unfortunately, the timing of this, the agenda item, we didn't get to it before he started. He just walked in about five minutes ago and he's starting now.
Okay, so I'm assuming we'll just continue this at our next meeting.
That would be great if we could just do that for the next, next meeting.
It's understandable. Thanks for being where you're at to get information.
Thank you guys for understanding. Sorry, I'll put it on the next, next board meeting.
Sure, that's fine. Okay, we'll go to auditor. County cares recipient, we need to approve by motion certification form for the EDA to act as the sub-recipient of county cares funds. Brady?
Mr. Chair, the county has approved the CARES distribution plan on July 14th, which included funding of approximately $200,000 for the EDA to make available to local businesses in need. And since the EDA will be acting as a sub-recipient of county cares funds by receiving the funding from the county and then making direct payments to businesses, it's appropriate that they sign a certification as to the legal use and time period for the use of those funds and the return of any unused funds. So the certification form in your packet is adapted from the certification form that county signed with the state when we received that funding. So essentially, it lays out the necessary expenditures that it must be necessary due to a public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus COVID-19 as described and defined in official federal guidance that the expenses were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved in March for Cook County Grand Murray EDA and that the expenses will be incurred during the period of March 1st, 2020 and ending on December 1st, 2020. And a cost is incurred when the Grand Murray EDA has expended funds to cover that cost. The funds distributed pursuant to this certification so lists the things that we're not allowed to spend and thus also the EDA is not allowed to spend on revenue replacement for lost revenues of any business for expenditures for which the local government has received other emergency COVID-19 supplemental funding for that same expense. So also states that the Cook County EDA is responsible for repayment of any funds used by the local government in any manner contrary to federal or state or municipal guidance and that they will periodically report expenditures from the relief fund as required by the Cook County Auditor Treasurer. And a specific date is that December 1 is when we have to make that determination. So we pass on to the EDA a date of November 15th so that we can process any of that and that they'll make those funds available back to us by November 15th. So ask that you approve that certification and that the specific request of the EDA was for $200,000 even. So I'd ask in that approval of the certification that we include the amount of $200,000 as a direct payment to the EDA to then make their sub-recipient loans or grants.
Okay, let's do a roll call on questions or comments on this before we attempt to take action. Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. So the 200,000 has, with this, has everything been put out to all the different entities that are looking at funding? Is this the last of the money?
No, this is, this is the start for them. We have, the county has spent some funds, the public health, human services, their programs are getting started. You hear some of that on the contact tracing, the three people that they've hired to train in that area and other programs. So they're getting ready. The county's already spent some funds. We're going to reimburse ourselves with those fundings. But this is the start of the business funding end of it. And the EDA has been working pretty diligently on this. They're advertising this funding and they'll be, I'm not sure when they'll make a request, probably shortly, within a week. I think they'll be ready to actually have us send out the money to them and then they'll start making the payments as they start to get the applications in that fit their program. The task force has looked at their application and their process and has approved that. They've done a very, very good job of setting that up, very efficient.
Okay, so the different, the different entities are now starting to roll with monies that they receive from the CARE Act because especially with the limitation of the timing here of November 15th, is that for everyone?
The date by which they have to be spent is December 1st. It has to be incurred. And if they're, if it's county, meaning public health, human services, meaning the county general fund or building fund, wherever the county spends directly, we have December 1st to, to actually spend that money. We gave the EDA a shorter time period because then they have to put their books together and get that to us before December 1st. But there's, there's two things. There's, there's payroll going on during all this time in public health, human services, public safety that is eligible. But they're also putting, what they're working on right now are the various programs, which you've seen some of that with the, the new hires by public health. And then they're, they're ramping up their work in human services for some of the payouts directly to either to other agencies that they work with for services or directly to the public.
Okay, thank you. Just a good idea to get an overall view of how all this is going. So thanks, thanks again.
It's going to be a rush to get it done.
Commissioner Duke Kirk?
No questions.
Commissioner Dushaw?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Brady, for going over this. And I haven't heard any, any direct feedback from businesses lately, but I know that this will be very helpful for them from, from past conversations. Over.
Okay, well then we'll entertain a motion to approve. This cares subs- recipient for the EDA.
This is Commissioner Mills. I'll move to approve the certification form for the EDA to act as the sub-recipient for the CARES funds. Over.
Do we have support?
Starley, support. Did you include the 200,000, Commissioner Mills? I think Brady asked if the money, the amount of money, 200,000?
I can be more specific. I'll amend my motion to be specific on the amount of 200,000. Over.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have support then from Commissioner Starley?
Yes, I support.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote. Commissioner Dushaw? Commissioner Duke Kirk?
Aye.
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bershamp's aye passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on that, Brady. I'm sure this has been interesting for your office going through all this. Appreciate your diligence.
Gets more interesting every day.
I'm sure. We'll get that way, I'm sure. So we'll go to our administrator and the first item, I'll just turn it over to our interim administrator Rogers. But I believe the first item will be Commissioner assignments for going forward for the rest of the year without Commissioner Dushaw. But go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So at, at our last meeting, it was recommended that we put on the agenda for this meeting, making sure that we had Commissioner Committee assignments for when Commissioner Shai has resigned later this month, the end of August. So what I've put on the agenda are the list of his assignments that aren't like, you know, the county board meetings and the committee and the whole, those kinds of things where all of you already are. So I'm not sure the best way to go through this. I don't know if it would be best to have just Commissioner Dushaw talk about each one and, you know, how often they meet and see who's maybe already on there as a vice, as a, you know, alternate. How would you like to proceed?
Okay, well, I think maybe to do this efficiently, but I'm really open to anything. And I think Commissioner Shaw would have a lot of input into that. But I would, in looking this over, I guess I would like to just ask Commissioner Dushaw, which one of these are, seem to be the most active? And then we'll try to focus on those. I don't know if you're comfortable doing that, Commissioner Dushaw, but if you could just give us an indication, or would you rather just go by each one? I'll leave that up to you. We can just go down the list.
Okay, the ones in blue there are the, they meet on a monthly basis.
Okay.
The only other one that is the North Shore Management Board that meets quarterly.
Okay.
And then like the rest of these haven't met for quite a while. But the ones in blue, and then there's one missing. I'm on the, I'm the vice chair on the radio board for the ECB and that one's not on here.
So it's vice chair for the radio board?
Arrowhead Regional Corrections meets monthly. The Building Committee meets monthly.
Radio board meets how often?
Like quarterly.
Quarterly. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I guess let's just focus on the blue ones and then the vice chair that, will the radio board meet again before the end of the year?
Yeah, they'll meet again. Rowan knows the info on that.
Okay.
And then the Northeast Minnesota Transportation Partnership, they meet quarterly also. And we're a vote on that board.
Okay, so then let's focus on Mills. So let's just say we'll go for, we'll focus on Arrowhead Regionals Corrections Board, Building Committee, the Grand Party, wait, don't need that one. Okay, Highway Advisory Committee, Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership, we'll have one more meeting there. And the North Shore Management Board, one more meeting there. And then the Public Safety and Transportation Committee that meets monthly or by need. And then the radio board quarterly, one more. Is that fair to, to focus on those? Okay, well, to start off, I'm the alternate and have served on Arrowhead Regional Corrections Board. So if we follow the recommendation that the alternate could continue there, and I believe that's the first Friday of the month. Is that correct, Commissioner Dushaw? Is it still?
That meets on the third Friday of the month and that's been a Zoom meeting for three months now, so.
Third Friday. And I think that's when we have. No, okay. Well, I'd be willing to do that unless someone else wants to, because I've been alternate and I've been getting all the minutes and all the documentation. And I did serve on it for one full year. Unless someone else wants to. Okay. Then I could do that one. Building Committee. Do we have anyone? I also serve on that one. If someone else wants to serve on it, we've been meeting monthly on Fridays.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Bershamp, I'm the alternate.
Okay, good. Would you be willing to continue?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. Excuse me, I'm writing these down. Then we'll go to the Highway Advisory Committee.
Wait, I got those two mixed up.
Okay.
So public safety, public safety and transportation, I'm the alternate, that's the one we have three, right Myron? We have you and Bobby as regularly going and me as the alternate?
I'd have to check, I could right now, I have it here.
Okay. And then Dave, if you wanted to do the Building Committee, I interrupted you when you were gonna go talk.
Uh, thank you, I was, I was just, um, wondering when, when each of these meets, I under- I understand they're monthly and quarterly with, with some of them, but just, specifics would be helpful for me, over.
And then while Myron's looking that up, uh, Bobby's the alternate on the Airport Commission, just to have that noted, I don't usually miss them, so I don't need them on there. The other big one that's not highlighted in blue is the AMC Policy Committee. Usually when we're missing a Commissioner, the Administrator takes that as a voting member and needs to notify the Association of Minnesota Counties so that our vote is recorded. So we'll have to, uh, play that one by ear when we hire the Administrator and find out whether or not we're having our December meeting.
Well, I'm not finding, Commissioner DuKirk, oh, Public Safety Transportation Committee, I've got in my, my handwritten notes for the meeting we had, that you are an alternate there. So, but it's not on your list, um, I'm sure that we have to work on that. So, um, so continue with that.
Just to be clear, so, um, Commissioner DuKirk, you're gonna do the Public Safety and Transportation Committee then?
I will do that one, and the, uh, if we can go back to the Building Committee, if Bobby will tell us when that meets, I'm willing to let another Commissioner step in on that one.
I, I've got the dates of that now, it's the second Friday, um, at one PM, uh, monthly.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Mills.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I can, I can do the Building, um, Committee, second Friday, one PM, monthly.
Make sure that you get the, uh, invite for that.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, so now we'll do the Northeast Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership, there's a quarterly there, anyone wanting to do that?
I could work on that.
Okay. Now Starley? North Shore Management Board?
Commissioner Bershain?
Yes.
Did we, did we do the Highway Advisory Committee?
I'm sorry, I missed that, thank you.
Who's the alternate for that?
What's the, I'm.
Who's the alternate?
I don't, I'm not sure. You're the, uh, you're the alternate, Myron.
Absolutely, thought, okay, so I will do that one. How often does that meet?
It meets, um, monthly on the, I'll look it up, hang on just a second. It's the third Thursday, um, monthly at eight PM, eight, eight AM.
I can do that, I think. Wait a minute, I've got, yeah, let, let me tentatively take it, I might have a problem.
Myron, Commissioner Bershain? Um, Bobby? Already said that you're already coming to that one. So that's the one we do with the Highway Engineer.
The Highway Advisory Committee with all the representatives?
Right.
There are citizens on it?
Right.
Yeah, I have, but I have not attended those for some time, I did before I was a Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
I have not, uh, Public Safety, I have.
Okay.
Myron, I could be an alternate to you.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
May need it.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I was on it many years ago.
Sure. Very good. I think, uh, we got one left, North Shore Management Board. Oh, we got two left, excuse me.
When does that meet again?
It's a quarterly meeting, so.
It's, uh, it's quarterly, I'm not, I'm not sure when.
Oh. Who's an alternate?
I don't know. It's not me.
Yeah.
Can we bring that one to the next meeting?
Yep. It doesn't matter, I mean, I could take it too, we only probably have another couple left.
Okay. Starley, on that one, then we have the Radio. I'm, I'm sorry, didn't hear Commissioner Dushaw's comment.
It's that, um, one right below the Transportation Partnership, that Emergency Communication Board.
Oh, yeah, the North.
Oh, that one, excuse me, okay, so that we added, is that the one we're talking about for quarterly or the rate?
Yes.
So it's not the Radio, okay, excuse me, that's where, okay, so we're talking about that and who would be willing to take that?
So which one are you on, the North Shore, what?
Northeast, Emergency Communications Board, I think we referred to that earlier as Radio Board, and so.
Oh.
It's, it was, uh, we had the wrong terminology there, uh, temporarily. So that, that is quarterly?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that would be by Zoom?
For, right now it's Zoom, but usually they meet down in Duluth, so.
Okay.
Where do they meet?
I think what he just said was, right now it's by Zoom, but when it's, when it's pandemic, it's, uh, in Duluth, down at Pike Lake.
Oh.
Well.
It'll probably continue to be Zoom for quite a long time.
Well, if it works into my schedule, I could do it, um, but I just don't know. I'm busy.
So, so I, I don't know if you heard what he said, but Rowan and Mike Keport both attend it right now.
Okay, well, if we're comfortable with that, then that's fine with me.
Okay, there's only one meeting.
Okay.
There's.
Do we have them all written down, uh, Administrator Rogers?
I think so, do you want me to run through the list that I have?
Yeah, then I'll check it with mine, sure.
So.
There's only one Radio Board meeting left.
Okay, so.
This year, which is September twenty-fourth.
There's only one Radio Board meeting left and here, and it's September twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So I'm presuming that'll be a Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I have, uh, so far, uh, the AMC Policy Committee, which generally happens in December, so, um, we'll need to make sure, uh, that, uh, the Administrator at that time, uh, we notify AMC so the Administrator can vote. The Arrowhead Regional Corrections Board, um, Myron's currently the alternate and he'll take that one.
Yes.
The Building Committee, uh, Dave Mills will do that. The Highway Advisory Committee, Myron, uh, will be the lead on that and Jenny will be the alternate. The Northeast Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership is a quarterly meeting and, uh, Commissioner Starley will do that. The Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communication Board, which we just found out meets in September, uh, it's one meeting lots this year, quarterly, Commissioner Bershain will do that. The North Shore Management Board is a quarterly meeting and Commissioner Starley will do that one. The Public Safety and Transportation, uh, Committee, it's a monthly meeting and Commissioner DuKirk will do that. I get everything?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so that meeting for the, um, Emergency Communications was September twenty-fourth?
Yes.
I think I can do that, yeah, I can't on, it's the fourth, fourth, uh, Thursday, so I think I can, yeah, all right. Well, then we'll, I make sure that we get noticed of those and someone could coordinate that, very good. And, uh, Commissioner Dushaw, thank you for all your work that you've done on these committees and, and, uh, you've especially just been a real great asset to us as a county Commissioner for your expertise in roads and transportation issues and, uh, I've learned a lot from you and still have a lot more to learn, but you've been a great resource to us and a leader in that area.
And I, I would, I would add, um, from my other, with my other job, um, that I know that Rowan has, uh, really appreciated, uh, Commissioner Dushaw's leadership on the, on the communication, um, and Radio Boards. Is those are very complex issues, um, that are hard to understand, very technical issues and, so having a Commissioner that, uh, gets that has been very valuable to us and helping us through that.
Okay, let's, um, let's move on, um, to, anything else from you Administrator Rogers?
Thank you, Commissioner Bershain and, and Commissioners, yeah, I just have a, a couple of, a couple of quick updates. Letting you know that we have been spending a lot of time with, um, Auditor Powers, uh, and Brian Silence, our maintenance person, for, you know, doing this opening, uh, this sort of gradual opening, uh, that, that we need to do around both elections and courts opening up. And, uh, Brian certainly, uh, has a lot on his plate trying to make sure that we're following all the cleaning protocols that are set out by the courts, a lot of signage is going up. The elections, um, you know, we have a, we have a primary election, obviously next Tuesday, so I hope everybody is registered already and, and I would encourage people to vote in advance if you could, to minimize the traffic in the courthouse, um, on, on the election day, so. We view it as an opportunity to see how well our processes work, to get ready for the November election, which will presumably be busier. So, um, there's, there will be, when you come to the courthouse, if you come to the courthouse to vote on, um, next Tuesday, there will be, um, kind of a tent outside, um, because it might rain, we'll have somebody located out there, so for people who are bringing in ballots that day, they will not need to come into the courthouse to do that, we'll be, have somebody out there, taking those ballots and, um, making that faster for people. People that do need to come to the Auditor's Office or to come in to vote in the Commissioner's Room will come in, there will be, because we have, uh, a court, court security now and it's also, um, everyone that comes into the courthouse will need to go through, uh, security, um, and, uh, they will need to wear, uh, a mask that day, if you don't, if people come without a mask, they will, they can be provided with one. People who don't want to wear mask or who can't wear a mask for election purposes will be given the opportunity to have somebody come out and they can do curbside voting. So, um, trying to keep the building as safe as possible, we've, we, as you know, we've allowed, um, we've been having people come to the courthouse for other departments, through appointments, and we've asked our staff not to make appointments that day just because of, uh, the lines and trying to not back people up through security. Try to keep things as moving as smoothly as possible. The CARES, uh, which was mentioned by both Grace Knogger and, uh, Auditor Powers, uh, distribution is starting to move forward, uh, the business community is off to a good start and I expect that we'll, uh, they've had a good plan and a good process and it's well advertised, so I expect they'll just go do their thing and, um, we won't have any issues around that. Grace has jumped in and has hired and, uh, several temp workers, they're gonna help her with her work and, uh, the public, uh, the Human Services processes have been modified to be able to distribute money to individuals, um, who are falling through the cracks on some of the other programs, but also we'll use the, um, Public Health Advisory Process that we use to grant other money to not-for-profits for that process, it's been modified. So those things are all moving along, um, one of the, we're going back and looking at past spending, uh, back to, um, March in the courthouse to make sure that things that are eligible for CARES, that we will, um, do the journal entries to move that around so that we can fund it with that money rather than, uh, than money that, you know, in our regular budgets. So that's moving along, I hope, um, by the end of August, we'll have a more, uh, tangible update for you as we start distributing that money to let you know where that money's gone so far. Um, working with the Highway Staff, uh, and, uh, Mike, an interim, uh, Highway Department Head, Mike Tardy, uh, to prepare for, uh, the, the, um, start date, which is next Monday, uh, with our new Highway Engineer. And, uh, for my part, um, I will be spending some time with him doing introductions since we're in this kind of remote world that we live in. Commissioners, you can, uh, expect me to be setting up some, uh, maybe some, some sort of virtual meetings, where you have the opportunity to meet, Robbie and talk to him and just get to know him a little bit, I'll also be setting him up with department heads, particularly focusing on the departments where there are, you know, dependencies between the two departments, like Public Safety and Land Services, to make sure that he's aware of the scope of those departments and, uh, who, who he needs to go to, under what circumstances and how this all fits together, uh, just try to get him out ahead of that right from the beginning. Um, and then, let's see, uh, the reopening Cook County Group, which is made up of, uh, North Shore Health and, uh, Representatives, different government entities like, um, the county and, and, uh, city Representatives, as well as the school and who else is on there, all, a lot of different business entities, private business owners as well as, um, Mary Somnus, Jim Boyd and Linda Jurek, has been meeting regularly since April. And, um, I think those have been very productive conversations, I think there's some really good outcomes that have come from the way businesses have adapted, uh, their businesses and have listened to Public Health. I think Public Health and, and the health, uh, community in general has done a good job of trying to hear the concerns of businesses and help be creative in those processes, we continue to meet, um, and, uh, we meet again this week, so I've found that to be very, a very helpful conversation. And that's really the extent of my updates for now.
Okay. Well, let's see if there's any questions for Administrator, uh, in those topics, um, just do a quick roll call vote, um, Commissioner Starley?
Thank you, um, the ballots could be also dropped at the drop box by the front door?
Uh, yes, they can.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and thank you, Rena, for the updates, I, I don't have any questions right now, over.
Mr. DuKirk?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dushaw?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. And I have none, so very good, let's, let's go to our next item, Employee Concerns, Commissioner Concerns, we'll go to Commissioner Reports, are there any reports? Or let's go with Commissioner Concerns first, I guess, let's, are there any Commissioner Concerns or reports? Uh, Commissioner DuKirk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so it's kind of under everything at one time in meetings and I've been talking to Pam, our HR, and just talking about, um, how we conduct meetings and my behavior at meetings and I just wanna talk about process. And, uh, Arvis came before the Board multiple times asking for repairs to be done at Colville Town Hall and the process we followed with that was we created a Building Committee. And then under that Building Committee, we've been reviewing it and working with her, which has been really great. And then we created a Parks and Trails Committee, spent considerable time with that Committee, created a strategic plan, so when we wanted to increase the use of ATVs on the Gunflint Trail, we had a strategic plan and a process put together in order to review that and move that forward and that went much better than the previous times in being on this board for many, many years, when ATVs came up, it was very contentious and very difficult and there really wasn't a process to go back to, to say, does this fit into our strategic plan? And I know you're all sick of hearing it, but I'm gonna say border to border again. That was a four, four-year process of every entity under the sun who might be touched by that coming to the board and a process. And then we had one, one, one citizen come to public comment and no process was followed. We jumped through hoops, phone calls were made, contacts were made, we didn't have Min Dot come to the board and explain the process to us at all and, and I apologize again for swearing during the meeting, that wasn't okay. And I know we have the speaker piece, but I guess what I really need to say is my biggest frustration is process. I have heard over and over again from many of you as commissioners demanding that we follow a process and that we don't do things without process and we followed no process in this. And then at the Parks and Trails Commission meeting, the interim administrator come, came to the Parks and Trails Commission with a predetermined list of the brand-new committee of people to sit on it wanting a rubber stamp to go to the county board, that's not the process. We're not following process and so that's my discussions. Again, I will apologize to you for my swearing and my outburst, but I'm pleading with you to follow process, to back it up, put the brakes on and follow process when we're doing things and I don't know if we can do that at this point because it's gone too far, but thank you all for listening.
Thank you, um, is it okay to ask you a question for a little more clarity? Thank you, yeah, I think in your last topic, you're talking about the Paradise Pit situation and how, how what are your thoughts about how that could have proceeded differently?
It should've went before the Parks and Trails Commission. And I know that there's been, uh, well, we don't have time, we do have time, we always have time. It should've came to them first for review. It could've been a committee of the whole discussion and Min Dot should've come to us and told us what we could do, how we go forward, whether or not we wanna put in a submission to buy the property, whether or not we wanna do a lease agreement. They could've explained to all of us how long it takes for a citizen to buy a property. I mean, we just all took someone's word and went ahead and, and sent a letter and that's not normally how we do things. That's not how we've done things in the multiple changes of commissioners since I've started. I, I mean, it's just mind-blowing to me that we just approved that like we did, that's not something that's happened in the past and so I just need to apologize for my behavior.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, comments, concerns?
This is Commissioner Mills?
Yes, Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Sharon, and thank you Heidi for, for sharing your thoughts and concerns there, Commissioner Duke Kirk. Um, so as far, as far as you, you went over a number of, a number of topics and I think it, were you giving examples of process at the beginning and then at the end, no process, or were you saying there needs to be, there were, the initial examples needed more process or, um, I just wanna be clear?
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. They all had a process, you know, when, when Arvis came to us many, many times, we just, you know, we don't respond to the public, which is frustrating. And then our way to deal with the situation was to create a building committee. So we have processes in place for many things and when we don't, we create a process. We have a process for acquiring land and other things like that and we didn't follow it.
Okay, thank you, so, um, it, one of the phrases that stuck out to me was just pump the brakes and, um, and I, I feel like there's miscommunication or misunderstanding, um, possibly on my part. Um, that was my, it was, that was pretty much exclusively my intention with sending that letter was to pump the brakes because we know how long these processes take and, um, and it was my understanding that by sending the letter we would slow things right down and we could go through the process then. Um, and I thought, I thought we talked about that, um, when we approved the letter. But, um, but if not, that, I, I wanted to be clear that that was a hundred percent my intention was to, to put us in a position to be able to have the process. Um, and, and I guess for the record, my, my, uh, I, 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 um, the, the citizen coming before the board, speaking of it, um, in my mind, I was kinda after the fact, um, I had been, um, getting a lot of public feedback from, uh, maybe a dozen individuals, um, before that, uh, really, really, um, concerned about, um, what, what was going on down there. As far as private acquisition was concerned. And, um, and so I thought that, that this letter would be a, a, a good way to, to stop any private acquisition and, um, and to, you know, bring it back to, to the, the Parks and Trails or, or whatever, um, whatever process would be, would be best for that, so. Um, I apologize if that, if that wasn't clear before, I'm hoping that it is now, um, over.
That's, that's still not the process, there's a process before the letter. Before we send a letter, we should've had a conversation, at a minimum, we should've had a conversation with Min Dot about how to proceed and we didn't have any of those conversations, we just skipped ahead. None of the people from Passion Pit came to the park board.
Okay, Administrator Rogers, you had your hand up?
Um, yes, I, I just would like to say that, um, that Commissioner Mills is, is, uh, is correct, that was my intent, was really just to slow the process down. And, um, all of this took place in a period of about three weeks and it's, we slowed it down enough. And the very first time that the Parks and Trails Commission met after this kind of blew up, I was there talking about it with them, so, um, I, nothing so far has bought, we haven't bought any land, we haven't leased any land. We haven't done anything other than said, you know, we might be interested in this. Let's slow it down, put us at the place where we could do something, so. I'm not sure how, how different that process could've been, but, um, it was a very short timeline. So if I didn't follow a process, um, I'm willing to certainly learn from that, but I had been in contact with, um, Tim Nelson, who's in charge of the Parks and Trails Commission, almost from the beginning, uh, talking with him about how to proceed with this. That's all I got.
Okay. Anything else, uh, for commissioner concerns?
That's Commissioner Mills?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, I, I guess just from what I've been hearing lately is a lot of feedback about, well, first, I guess first I wanna make sure Commissioner Duke Kirk was, is done or, 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 um, or that part of the conversation is over.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills, um, I don't know any other way to explain it, I'm not as eloquent as you are, so I'm just gonna let it go.
Okay, thank you, I, uh, I'm, I'm with you with process, um, my intention was to, to pump the brakes, I, I feel we've done that and now we can, um, explore our options and, and have it go through the process, so I'm, I'm in full support, I think, I think our disagreement lies with, with, uh, the letter and, and what that, what that letter means, um. But, but thank you again for, um, for expressing your concerns and frustrations um, regarding, regarding the situation, um, because it is, it is a very, uh, sensitive situation when we're talking about public land, um, and, and, uh, the rights, the rights of the public and, and responsibilities, uh, that we have as a board. Um, uh, what I, what I wanted to share though, uh, was just, um, a number of concerns, um, uh, regarding, um, the detour on, on County Road Seven, um, clearly County Road Seven doesn't normally get the same amount of traffic as Highway sixty-one and, uh, and I'm sure everyone has seen how busy it's been in town and so now, um, all of that traffic is on County Road Seven and, and that's a, that's a significant increase and, um, and it's a significantly, uh, different, narrower, uh, windier, uh, hillier road. Um, and so I guess, you, um, you know, the, the highway department has, has, um, checked the, the right-of-ways and, and cleared that prior to the detour and I, and I think since that, um, I still have, um, residents that, that are very nervous and, and, um, and upset, uh, about just the speed of traffic and, and the volume of traffic. And I don't know that there's a whole lot that can be done about that, but, um, I, I, uh, wanna ask everybody to please drive, uh, a little slower, a little, a little more carefully. Uh, know that there's, uh, dr- driveways all along County Road Seven that, um, that don't have the same shoulder, the same right-of-way width that, that would, we would have on Highway sixty-one. And, um, and, and, um, I guess that's, that's the extent of it at this point. Um, I, I don't know if there's a process for, uh, requesting, um, one of the, one of the sheriff's, um, speed, um, signs, uh, the, the electronic portable ones. Um, but I think it could be, it could be helpful, um, probably on the, on the west end of, of County Road Seven. Um, but, um, but others with, uh, with more road experience or, or highway, maintenance experience might know, uh, uh, or, or I guess enforcement experience might know the best, best location for that. Um, but I, I, I think we, we should just recognize the, the the increase in traffic there and, and how that's a little more hazardous and dangerous. Um, but that's all I, that's all I have for now, over.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Mills, any other, uh, commissioner?
Yeah, I'm on your.
Thank you, go ahead, Commissioner Desha?
Yeah, this'll be my last, um, regular board meeting, I'll be, be at PHHS in a couple of weeks there, but I just wanna share some stuff with you, um, you know, there's probably been, I probably casted the most low votes in the last three years than any commissioner in the last three years and the reason I did that is, you know, during the levy season, when we set our levy, I never forgot about who, um, who voted me and who I represent. You know, I always thought about the little guy, the person that couldn't afford tax levies, the person that's just barely making it in the county. And, um, I'm hoping whoever replaces me in the next year, I guess, they don't forget that either, you know, we're not all, everybody in this county isn't a millionaire and living down in Lutzen in a million-dollar house. There are people that are just barely making it and, um, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons, well, that is the reason why my votes go the way they do. You know, and the other reason I ran for county commissioner was to give a voice to Grand Portage, whether Grand Portage is an Indian reservation or not, it's still part of Cook County. And we went without representation for thirty-plus years and that's a real shame. And, um, you know, I'm moving on to a bigger position, a whole different government system. And, um, I'll take away what I've learned here in the last three years as a plus, you know, it's been interesting, it's been fun, it's been frustrating, you know? And when we have our, um, discussions at this board meeting there, you know, I just hope you value everybody's opinion because I felt like my opinion wasn't valued. You know, I just kinda said what I had to say and I became the squeaky wheel, I just got, kinda got pushed off to the side. And, um, that's too bad, you know? I do have a lot of support, I have a lot of support in Cook County, I get contacted from all five districts from people thanking me for my service, for my votes, for the outlook I had on the little person in the county. And, um, you know, I guess the one thing that I'll leave you with is just, just don't forget them people. Remember you, um, you worked for the taxpayers, they voted you in and, uh, don't ever forget that, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Deshaun, I didn't know this was your last meeting and, um, I really take what you're saying to heart to myself, I, I'm learning as I reflect back that some of the feedback that you've given us and to me is, um, maybe we could've done some things differently, um, in regards to how we had discussions. And I, I think too that, uh, especially on the speak the peace issue, I, I learned that maybe that's on our part, maybe we weren't as considerate of, uh, uh, what maybe would be called institutional racism, that could be interpreted by certain people. Uh, and I think you pointed that out. Um, hopefully that, um, you feel like you've had influence and, and, uh, I think I know I've learned a lot from you and, um, I, I think, uh, have appreciated your contributions. And I think what you're saying now and what I hear you say is, is something that I will really think about as we go forward and, um, uh, I am only speaking for myself and as a board chair. I apologize if I haven't, uh, if you felt I haven't included you uh, in our discussions as much as you maybe thought. Uh, I know that sometimes we have differences in fiscal outlook, but we do need to have more respectful conversations, uh, with people that are, uh, have different viewpoints and so I hope you understand at least that I, I've learned that and appreciated that, um, and you've taught me a few lessons that way. So thank you for, from me. And hope that we can keep in touch when you're, uh, in your new responsibilities and I'm sure you'll do well. Commissioner Duke Kirk?
Bobby, thank you very much for your service. And I agree, I hope that, um, all voices are heard. I wanna thank you for speaking up for the motorized users of Cook County and thank you for your support with me on that. They are also residents and taxpayers of Cook County. And I wanna apologize for not understanding your concerns with Speaker Peace. You were right on that, us adopting that turned into a way for our board chair to stop people from talking and that is what you were trying to say and I didn't understand it. And I am very sorry that I didn't understand that and I do now. And so I just wanna apologize for that and thank you for your service. And I also want to thank you for your friendship. We have always known each other and been friends, but now I don't think that either one of us is gonna leave the other one alone and we'll be keeping an eye on each other and making sure that, uh, we still give to the community, so I can't wait to see what you do as tribal chair, over.
Thank you, Commissioner Duke Kirk.
Uh, Commissioner Desha, um, over the last three years, you know what I've seen? I've seen you like blossom. Because three years ago when I'd look down to my right and, and, um, looked to you for an opinion, a lot of times you'd shake your head and I would respect that. And then over the last year and a half or so, I'd look down and you'd nod your head like, yes, I have something to say. And I think that has been a part of all of us getting used to working with each other. And I hope that you will take that with you in your new, uh, chairman job because people will look to you for lots of because people will look to you for lots of opinions. And maybe in the beginning, because it's so new, like when you came on the board, it'll take a while, but I know you'll open up. I know you'll guide your people. And it's been a great pleasure working with you. And I just wish you all the best.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Deshaun, for, for your service and, and for, for your votes and for the discussion that you offered. And particularly now for the reminder of, of, of what is needed in, in leadership in our, in our positions. As, as I've gotten more familiar and comfortable with, with the way the county, county operates, I understood things more and more and, and have not been asking nearly as many questions as, as, at least in, in meeting, in, in, in the public meetings as, as I did earlier on. And I think, I think that's important to do, even if I know the answers already, so that other people can understand how things work and why things work, most importantly. It's the why that I find the most important when, when it comes to the voting and, and just that, that big picture vision. And, and I greatly appreciate the reminder that those questions are needed, not, not for my benefit, but for, but for the public's benefit, for those who are, are, like you say, just scraping by here. I think, I think it's of the utmost importance that we communicate what is going on and, and why it's going on and, and what our plan is to, to serve our community. So I, I greatly appreciate everything that you've contributed and, and look forward to working with you in, in the future. Thank you. Over.
Commissioner DuKirk.
Okay, we'll stop being sappy, Bobby, because I know you don't really like that. Commissioner Mills, Sheriff Eliasen would like to know which direction you'd like the speed, speed meter sign to face on the west end of seven.
Thank you. I will, I will confer with, with concerned residents to see what, what, what they think would be most helpful. And, and I'll, I'll get back to them on that. Thank you very much for, for, for asking. And yeah, I'll, I'll follow up. Over.
Thank you. I'm all into asking Pat for speed meter signs all the time.
Okay, anything else for Commissioner Concerns, comments? And we'll go to meetings to notes or any meeting updates. Excuse me. We're gonna have a special meeting on August 18th after the committee of the whole work session to discuss county administrator candidates and select finalists for interviews. And we'll be receiving information from DDS on that shortly, I'm sure, with the videos. We're going to have county administrator interviews set now for September 10th, if all goes well. And that would be held virtually. Any other meetings to note from anyone else at this meeting? Okay. Very good. Well, we got our August anniversaries. Thanks to Commissioner DuKirk for doing this. And hopefully someone will continue it, I'm sure, after you left. But thank you for your work on always recognizing this important part of our, you know, county board duties to recognize our employees that get everything done. Commissioner DuKirk, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have Jacob Becker, one year at the highway department. Thank you. Keyshawn Barwalia, two years in our MIS department. Thank you for keeping us electronically safe. Grish Beshard, congratulations on lucky number 13. Thank you for all you do up in public health. Pamela Dixon, can we all believe it's only been one year? It feels like she's been guiding us and leading us very gently for much longer than that. So thank you, Pamela. Wes Higgins, seven years at the highway department. And Lisa Kerr, five years assessor, Parks and Trails, land commissioner assessor. And that is all of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we had a lodging tax comparison and as a PDF to us and then SRTS and ALSC agenda PFD. And I believe that if I don't hear any more comments or statements, that I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. And thanks again to you, Commissioner Deshaun, for all you've contributed to us. And wishing you the best going forward.